That looks great. Thank you very much, Chief. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. I've been asked this evening to review the Police Department's budget and policy, and we'll just jump right in. The San Mateo Police Department is a full-service police department, provides full-service police services 24 hours a day, seven days a week, all year round. We're comprised of three primary divisions, and we'll go through that during the presentation and identify how those positions are funded and staffed. Our total authorized sworn positions, meaning police officers, including myself, is 115, and our total authorized non-s sworn or civilian positions is just under 46 full-time positions. In a side-by-side comparison of the recently adopted budget compared to the prior fiscal year, you'll notice that the only real increase is in personnel costs, and those are due primarily to negotiated contract agreements. We've added no personnel from last year to this fiscal year. In fact, we did make one positional change that reallocated a CSO position to a record specialist, which results in a small cost savings. So we're relatively flat with the exception of the salary increases. As far as sources of how we're funded, 94% of our budget comes from the general fund, 5% from the downtown parking and security fund, and another 1% from police grants. The downtown parking and security fund pays for, funds our downtown officers, our abandoned vehicle officers who abate abandoned vehicle complaints and tow and cite those cars, as well as our parking enforcement, including our agreement with our vendor that provides parking enforcement services. As far as the police grants, those are primarily a result of state grants that fund portions of two traffic enforcement police officers. As far as where we're at in comparison to where we've been, this is a 25-year chart that shows the trend of where we've been in the last 25 years. The blue column here represents the percentage of the Police Department budget in comparison to the orange column, which is the city's overall general fund budget. And as you can see, we're relatively consistent at 34%. I'll draw your attention to the gray line at the top, which represents our allocated sworn position numbers. And you'll notice that we're up about nine positions, which represents about 8% over the 25 years in comparison to about a 12% increase in population. The population numbers are down at the bottom for your review. So where does that leave us in comparison to some of our neighbors? What we did here is we tried to identify some cities of similar size in order to conduct a comparison. If we looked at our county law enforcement agencies, the average there is about 36% as far as the percentage of the overall general fund budget in that particular city for each police department. We identified three cities that are similar to San Mateo, two of them being within the county, one of them just south of us in Santa Clara County, and you'll notice that where we fall within that comparison. So how do we spend these monies? As far as the allocation of our Police Department general fund budget, 88% of our funding is dedicated to personnel costs. 11% is dedicated to operating costs and another 1% to capital outlay. And we'll go through the personnel and operating costs as we move forward. We'll start with that 11%, which is our operating expenses, and I know this is a busy slide, but I think it's important to account for where these funds are going. If we start on the left-hand side and we look at citywide and facility maintenance-related costs, that's exactly what those are. Those include building maintenance charges, vehicle maintenance charges, utilities, communications costs, janitorial landscape services, and the like. Moving down, our responsibility or our cost to the county, the bulk of that is animal control costs, but it also includes our cost to the forensic lab, and our contribution to the narcotics task force, our color center cost, which is where we, which is our cost associated with sexual assault examinations. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later up at the county hospital. And then it also includes a cost to public safety communications at the county level, which provide us access to state databases, which we need to perform our daily duties. The contractual costs, you'll notice them to $472,000. A bulk of those is to our parking citation processing fees, as well as communication, all our Verizon wireless fees for our phones and computers that are in our patrol cars, our records management system, our maintenance for all computer hardware, and our ability to issue automated citations, the maintenance of that contract. As far as community service and social service contracts, and we'll get into these partnerships in just a minute, but I wanted to list that, what falls under that cost. That includes CORA, which is our domestic violence referral service for victims of domestic violence, the Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center, First Chance, which is managed by Star Vista, and I'll talk about that a little bit later on, our counseling and case management services for our juvenile diversion program, and our crossing guard contract. Moving over to the center, the center column, you'll see, and I'll just pick out some highlights, training for us is a very important area, and not only do we have state mandated training that's required that we are mandated to meet every year, and we're audited by the state to make sure that we meet those training standards. We also recognize the value of a well-trained, well-rounded workforce, and we work hard every year to provide for that, and that's where those training dollars go. Below that, you'll see police supplies, clothing, and safety equipment, and that's exactly what that is. That includes everything from gloves, batteries, masks, PPE, to ballistic vests. And then the rest there are pretty self-explanatory, but I would draw your attention over to the right-hand side for the Police Activities League Program. We have one police officer donated or dedicated to that program full-time. That's just the bulk of that cost, as well as $20,000 donation from the Police Department annually. Otherwise, that program funds itself through private donations. And then the remaining is general operating expenses, which includes office supplies, printer costs, postage, mileage, reimbursements, computer hardware, recruitment, advertising, we'll talk about that, those costs moving forward. I just wanted to make sure that from the previous chart where we identified the 11% in operating expenses, I wanted to kind of illustrate where those monies are spent and how they're allocated. So we did mention that the overall costs or the overall budget, 88% of that is dedicated towards personnel, and this is what our personnel looks like. 95% of those personnel costs go directly to salary and benefits, and another 5% to overtime. We'll address how that overtime, how those overtime dollars are allocated in a second. You'll notice at the bottom a comparison over the last few years as far as what our overtime budget is. And you'll notice we budgeted a little, we reduced our budget this year, and a lot of that is due to, typically overtime is in relation to vacant positions or vacancies that we're holding within the department. We've worked hard to address those vacancies, and we anticipate that the result of that will be a lower cost in overtime during this fiscal year. As far as overtime and how it's, and why we spend money on overtime, this is a chart to kind of explain that. Our largest and most costly portion of overtime expenditures are to maintain minimum staffing levels, and we'll, in a subsequent slide, we'll illustrate and articulate exactly what those staffing levels are. But that 40% covers everything from to replacing an officer who calls in sick, who may be on vacation, may be on family leave as a result of the birth of a child, or some type of medical leave, anything that would compromise us meeting minimum staffing levels in patrol, that's where that 40% is dedicated to. Operational overtime is more of a day-to-day function, day-to-day cost. A lot of this is attributed to report writing if an officer gets a call late in their shift, to prepare reports, to take somebody to jail, to do whatever. Unfortunately, police work is an unpredictable business, and sometimes officers aren't afforded the luxury of getting off on time, and those costs are comprised of the 24%. Also, in that 24%, as you know, we often experience spikes in certain types of crimes, whether it's gang-related violence, a spike in auto burglaries, or other community and quality of life issues. When we have to dedicate operations to combat those or to address those, this is where these overtime monies come from as well. We talked about training in the earlier slide, and 14% of our overtime budget is dedicated to training. Unfortunately, we don't have the luxury of training during our regular work hours. The manner in which we receive calls for service and deploy people out, I mean, the community does not allow us to complete that training. Our call volume and our schedules just don't allow for that, so we require officers to come in on their days off to complete that mandated training. We have a detective bureau which carries a significant and very heavy caseload, and they do a lot. Most people, and we'll talk a little bit about this later on, but most people don't quite understand when a police officer goes to a call and then leaves, sometimes that call is far from being concluded. Sometimes it's a complex investigation, and even after somebody's arrested or taken into custody, there's a requirement to work with the DA's office and put that case together that requires a great deal of work and follow-up. Our investigators can complete most of that during regular business hours, but due to the nature of some of these crimes, and when we have to contact victims or witnesses or conduct surveillance, some of that has to be done after or outside of their normal business hours, and that's where that 9% cost associated with investigations comes into play. Another 9% is reimbursable overtime. This is overtime that we know that we're going to be reimbursed for. An example of this is like our, the Office of Traffic Safety at the state level provides grant funds to combat driving under the influence, whether it's saturated patrols or checkpoints. We often get requests from private entities to provide police officers, and if it doesn't impact our staffing levels, we do that, and those are reimbursed to the department and comprise that 9%. Just like everyone else, our officers are required to answer subpoenas and appear in court. Sometimes those, or oftentimes those court appearances are on their days off, or we have, half the department obviously works in the evening hours, and those court appearances are during the day, and we pay, we obviously pay officers and staff to make those court appearances, and that's where that 3% comes in. And then the final 1% is from our youth services, school resource officer and power programs, and we're going to talk a little bit about, we're going to talk a lot about that moving forward as far as our youth services bureau and the benefits that we experience with having them. So that's a breakdown of where our overtime goes. So 5% of our personnel costs, which make up 88% of our total budget, is overtime, and this is how that 5% is broken down. This slide here is just a snapshot of stuff or basic assets that are managed by the Police Department. I'll point out a couple of them. You'll notice that we have, as far as police vehicles, we have four that are equipped with license plate readers, that's the ALPR. We also have two message board trailers that have license plate readers. One of the motorcycles that we use for traffic enforcement was purchased with asset forfeiture funds. That's an electric motorcycle. That actually is working out pretty well. And then there's two vehicles down here, the Tactical Operations Command Center and the rescue vehicle. Those are housed here at the San Mateo Police Department. They were funded, they were purchased with grant funds, and they actually belong to the county. They're a regional asset that's made available to any city in the county, but because of our location, size, and our capacity, they're housed here. The county does the same thing with the Daly City Police Department and Redwood City as far as housing assets, just to make them, to put them in convenient locations throughout the county and make them available to everyone. So while they're not ours, we thought it was important to put them on the list. We have regular access to them, but they do belong to the county. So our largest and most robust division, I talked a little bit in our first, a couple of slides about how the department is broken up into divisions. And our largest and most costly and most robust is field operations, just a fancy word for patrol. This is a list of our personnel assigned to patrol. Everyone on this, all the positions I identified on this slide are, those people that you see on a regular basis, day-to-day, out in the field, answering calls, addressing needs in the community. Our total full-time positions is 101 at a cost of $27.7 million. And again, that is everything from patrol services, traffic enforcement, our downtown officers, crime reduction unit, and parking enforcement, to include our abandoned vehicle abatement officers. So we mentioned minimum staffing levels in an earlier slide, and I'd like to direct your attention to the center of this slide, which provides a timeline. And underneath that timeline, the colored arrows, they represent minimum staffing levels during that period of the day. And you'll notice that those staffing levels range from five officers in the city to answer calls for service to 15 officers in the city at any given time. Not a real robust staffing model, but we believe based on our call volumes that it meets the needs of the community. We're policing a city of approximately 16 square miles with over 100,000 people, so those numbers, we do our best to make sure those numbers are adequate. Above that timeline, you'll notice another colored, another four colored lines. We're, our patrol staff is separated into four shifts in order to meet these minimums and to build in some overlap. And you'll notice the numbers of officers authorized. Those are authorized positions and not always filled. Very rarely, as you well know, are we at 100% staffing levels. It's difficult to maintain those, but what we try to do in patrol, we try to schedule the shifts where we can absorb or accommodate somebody who calls in sick or somebody who's on vacation without immediately having to rely on overtime. Because many times we're ordering officers in on overtime. It's a mandatory overtime rather than volunteering, so we try not to do that. Plus, it's a costly endeavor to rely on overtime. We're not always successful, but we try to, we try to do that in order to maintain the staffing levels below that timeline. That's how we schedule. If you ever had any questions, that's how we schedule our patrol officers, and these numbers are all based on a review of call volumes, calls for service, and officer safety considerations. So our next division is our detective bureau, and as I mentioned, our detectives carry very large caseloads. We have eight allocated positions. Again, those are not always full. I think right now we have six of those positions full. And as I had described, oftentimes, these calls are generated from a patrol officer going to a call. It may be a complicated, a complex call, such as, you know, even a homicide, some type of major assault, or sexual assault, or a complex fraud case, or identity theft, and like that. When we get a string of like auto burglaries or residential burglaries, we assign investigators to do follow-up on that, so we try to draw a link or nexus to cases within our city and neighboring jurisdictions. And this requires a great deal of work. This is, this is an interesting job, having done it. It's an interesting job, however, it's a taxing job, and there's never, never seems to be enough hours in the day. However, they do, they do a great job, and this is what our staffing looks like. We have 14 full-time employees, eight of those being full-time detectives, and a budget of just over $4 million. So here's youth services, and we talked a lot, I talked a little bit about youth services, and I said I'd mention it again, and as you know, I'm four months in to this, to my tenure here at San Mateo, and I was, you know, having been, you know, been from this area and been local, I was familiar with the robust youth services program that the department had, however, once I dove into it, I became very impressed, and I, and we're very fortunate to have the resources here that I don't find other places. Our staffing levels are pretty lean, and I'll talk about the school resource funding model in just a sec. I do want to point out that the probation, the county probation department has dedicated one full-time probation officer to the unit, which is a huge resource to us. We have bilingual counseling services, and we'll talk about how that, how our diversion program works in a second, but it's truly a very valuable asset, not only to the department, but to the city. So with regard to our school resource officers, we have a shared funding model for those officers. The city funds one officer, and then the two school districts fund the other two. That's the San Mateo Union High School District and the San Mateo Foster City School District, each fund an officer. So there's a three-way partnership, serving each public high school and their respective middle schools that feed into that high school. Recently, the San Mateo Union High School District, based on their plans for returning to school later in August, has decided to take a hiatus or suspend their funding of the SRO position for six months in order to determine what their, what their schools are going to look like as they go back to school, with the thought being if they don't have kids in school and at class, there may not be the same need for a school resource officer. We'll be meeting with the San Mateo Foster City School District later this month on the 30th, and I believe that they're going to have the same conversation, so we'll take a look at how that's going to move, how that's going to move forward. And we'll talk about, in the next slide, I'll talk about how the SROs work within the youth services bureau, but they also teach our gang-resistant education training, which is, we still have a gang issue here in San Mateo. It's not nearly what it was, and I think that a lot of, a lot of what the success we've seen has been as a result of that program. So dispatching records, these are, this is, these are the, kind of the, I call them the unsung heroes or the brains behind the curtain, for lack of a better term. They really make everything run, and they manage everything behind the scenes that are crucial to keep us an effective and efficient organization. We'll start with the dispatch center on the left-hand side there. You'll see the staffing numbers there. They answer over 170,000 phone calls a year. 65,000 to 67,000 of those are dispatched to officers in the field to handle calls for service. And then that's in addition to handling 25,000 or so incidents initiated by staff in the field, so they are the true, they are the first first responders. They set the tone for our response to emergencies, as well as handle all types of phone calls that are not, not, that can be handled via the phone too, so they do an incredible job, and they are the masters of multitasking. On the right-hand side, you'll see our records and property unit. Our records unit is crucial. We get audited annually by the state regarding our records-keeping, which needs to be meticulous. Our records personnel process all of our police reports, which number over 8,000 a year. They prepare cases for the district attorney's office, manage civil and criminal subpoenas, restraining orders, and they prepare records and, or process and prepare records in response to public records act requests. Side-by-side with them is our property unit, which manages over 20,000 pieces of evidence a year to make sure that those items of evidence are ready for court when necessary. And there's, that's a, that's a very complicated job, because, you know, it's not only retaining those for court, but figuring out when they can go back to their owner, what we do with those, the disposition of all those pieces of evidence. So that's quite a task, and they do, they do a really good job of keeping us, keeping us on track. And then finally, kind of the administration or management of the department. I fall into this division. This is, this is the administrative wing, I guess you'd call it. Not only do we manage budgets, staffing, payroll, the facility, all that type of stuff. The heavy lifting, and the most important part of this division, in my mind, is the two areas on the right-hand side there. Recruiting and hiring and training. We mentioned the importance of training in a well-rounded, well-trained workforce. We pride ourselves on recruiting a diverse, talented, well-educated group of officers. And in order to do that, we really have to be proactive, be creative, and reach all facets of the community to select and hire the most qualified candidates, and they do a really, a really good job with that. Managing training, make sure that we're in compliance, and not only maintaining that we're in compliance, but taking those extra steps to make sure that our officers are prepared to, to deal with new and evolving demands from the folks we serve on a regular basis. And then policy management and internal affairs. We're going to have a policy discussion in a few minutes here. All of our, and we'll talk about how we review policy, but all of the policy review and internal affairs investigations are managed via this division. Sometimes the investigations will be conducted within the division, and sometimes they'll be outsourced. And we'll talk about how we make those decisions, but they are tasked with managing all of that, and they do a good job. And then I think everybody's familiar with our media relations team. They fall under the same division here. And not only do they keep the community informed, in my mind, they serve a valuable public safety role in getting information out in a timely manner, and sometimes that information is directly related to public safety, and they do a fabulous job of keeping the community informed and engaged. So those are the, those are our divisions. That's the way, that's the way we're built and we're constructed. What you're looking at now is a table that's part of our budget, and this is publicly available, obviously, as part of the annual budget, but these are our performance metrics. You'll see a lot of numbers on there. I'll highlight a couple. Property crimes continue to be a challenge. Those represent burglary, theft, shoplifting, frauds, anything you can, anything property crime-related is contained within those numbers, and that's a challenge for us. I mean, if we're, if we're taking 8,000 cases a year or so, that's about a quarter of our, of our time is spent on property crimes. So we're continually combating those. I will talk more about our juvenile diversion program, but one number that's pretty impressive here is over the past few years, the young people that have been diverted from the criminal justice system. Our sole goal here at San Mateo PD, especially when dealing with juveniles, is to provide an alternative to them entering the criminal justice system, and we'll talk about how and why we do that. But those are the numbers of the folks that, the young folks that we've been able to do that with over the past years. I think those numbers are pretty good. This past year's probably a little bit lower, because a lot of these cases are generated from the schools with SROs, and as you know, the school year was cut short this year with the health order. And then the response times. A city of this size with this population, while there's no hard and fast national or state standard, a city of our size typically shoots for about a seven-minute response time, so we're under those, and we're very conscious of our response time to emergency calls. Given that, if you're calling the police and it's an emergency, five minutes is a heck of a long time to wait. So, you know, sometimes we're very close by, and we can get there within, you know, a minute or two, but those are our response times. Now, we couldn't, we couldn't really do our jobs as a police department or do them effectively, as effectively as we, as we do them or like to think that we do them without our relationships with our fellow service providers, so I'm going to run through a couple of those. There is a fiscal impact. Some of them have some costs involved, but I'd like to talk about how we work with them. And the first is community overcoming relationship abuse. You know, this is focused primarily at victims of domestic violence. Historically, you know, the Police Department, we get called out to an incident of domestic violence. They go out there, they conduct an investigation, they'd arrest the suspect if he or she was still, was still there, or they'd take a report if that person wasn't there, and then we'd just kind of leave and kind of walk away. And if the victim of that crime did not have some type of support, whether it be loved ones or family, or some type of structure that provided for that, they were kind of on their own, and we recognize that. CORA recognized that. And we've partnered with them, and now every domestic violence call that we go to, there's a referral made to CORA. CORA has a hotline available 24 hours a day that we can, at the scene of the crime, we can actually hook or connect victims of domestic violence up with someone to talk to right away. And they can come up with a safety plan, they can go with how they're going to move forward, whatever the case may be. As you can imagine, a lot of victims, or they've just gone through a traumatic experience, and they, they're not, they're not, they don't, they don't have the desire, or they don't want to speak to that council right away. We still make that referral to CORA, and CORA follows up with that victim the following day to make sure that they, they have all of the resources that they, they need to get through those, that difficult time. And you can see the numbers there over the last three years as far as the referrals and what we've done in trying to address that issue of domestic violence and making sure that the victims are provided with the resources and services they need. So I came from another police agency recently, and I will be very forthcoming here. San Mateo established a model in dealing with homeless populations that has been mimicked by other local entities, including myself. The partnership between officers and homeless outreach workers, especially, and we're talking about life moves, has been one that's been, I think, pretty successful from my perspective. There is a, there is a natural partnership there where our downtown officers work in conjunction with life moves, kind of as partners when they're dealing with our transient population. And our, our primary goal is to provide services and to provide housing services, and not just for the night, long-term, stable, sustained. uh, stable, sustainable services. And um, the, the nice thing about these numbers here is we, you know, I think every other year the county does a one-day homeless census. In that census, you'll notice in that census that those numbers vary dramatically. One year it could be extremely low, two years later it can be very high. What's nice about these numbers is each one of these numbers represents an individual. These are separate cases, separate individuals that we can track um, and um, are working hand-in-hand with life moves to uh, to provide services too. So in my mind, these numbers mean a little bit more. They're not an accurate number of our total homeless population by any means. Um, but it kind of shows um, a base of, of those, the, those um, individuals in our city and um, and the amount that we're working with to get uh, to get um, to get them services. As far as the cost goes, we're part of a county-wide contract with, with life moves. So the, the city actually uh, makes out pretty good on this. Um, it's the, most of the cost, I believe, is funded via Measure K. And uh, through the county, county contract. A lot of the calls we uh, the, the, there's a mental health component to many of the calls that the police are sent to. Um, and uh, we, uh, an- another one of, of the um, the partnerships that have been, that's been built between law enforcement and uh, and uh, another service provider is uh, American Medical Response is our ambulance provider. You probably see the ambulance riding around town, it says AMR. Uh, they have a, what, what we call a smart car and it's a mental health assessment resource. Um, and it's not an ambulance, it's like an SUV. Um, it's staffed by a specially trained AMR um, employee who has um, immediate uh, um, resources at their fingertips as far as who to call and uh, and, and what resources they can, they can dedicate to folks who are experiencing a mental health crisis. There are um, uh, a, a number of resources that the smart car provides. There's two primarily that, that we use in law enforcement. And there's two ways that an officer in the field would, would use the smart, uh, smart resource. One is um, I think everybody's familiar with the term fifty-one fifty and this, this is a pretty significant law. It's a, it's a w- welfare institutions code. It actually gives a police officer the authority to um, to take somebody's freedom away for up to seventy-two hours for a uh, if they meet certain criteria to um, to uh, provide them with a mental health evaluation um, and psychiatric services. Um, the criteria is basically if they're a danger to themselves, a danger to others, or gravely disabled. When we do run into those folks and they're compliant, they're non-violent, they're cooperative, uh, we can call the smart vehicle and have them come in and make that transportation to the, the medical professional. Most of the time it's to the hospital. However, um, SMART will take folks to their own um, existing um, physicians or mental health professionals if, if that's where they want to go. Um, but uh, uh, if there's a fifty-one fifty hold, most likely they're gonna go to the hospital. And they can do that without the big commotion or the big to-do about getting into an ambulance and, and making it more than it has to be. Which um, which I think is um, if we can handle it at the lowest level, that's what we always try to do. And I think this gives us a tool to do that. The other is sometimes an officer will go out to a call and, and will recognize that, that there's just something not right and it, and they're uncomfortable with walking away from the call. However, the individual they're in, interacting with does not meet the criteria for them to legally place them um, on a hold pursuant to the fifty-one fifty WNI section. Um, and it's difficult as a police officer to walk away from that because you know that, you know, that the hair kind of stands up in the back of your neck. You know that there's something just not right. Um, so SMART provides us with a resource where we can call that person out. We can um, connect that, that indivi- individual with resources at the scene via the, via the personnel in the smart car. And many times um, will, after talking with the police officer and the AMR staff, um, will, uh, that conversation will lead to the uh, the individual in question to, to seek um, to seek help voluntarily. And SMART will provide that transportation and uh, and we can resolve those, those types of uh, incidents that way. But I, I've been in that situation where I know that there's just something not right, but I, I don't um, have the authority or, or any um, recourse to uh, mandate that an individual um, seek attention. Um, and, and before there was just no alternative. Um, now we have uh, we have a resource to us that's very helpful. And you can see the frequency of use um, uh, with SMART. Now the, the downside is, is we're a big county and there, and the, and AMR deploys one, one smart vehicle um, countywide. And it used to be just uh, during the day, daytime hours, um, we s- we quickly said, hey, this is, this is a, a great resource and we need more. Um, so now there, there's one smart unit available countywide for twenty-four hours. Um, so there, there are occasions where, where we will call and uh, it will not be available because it'll be dealing with some uh, something else in another, another jurisdiction. Uh, the funding for this comes via the county's uh, contract with AMR for ambulance services. So again, it's cost-effective for uh, for us. So on the same theme, um, uh, Star Vista is a um, a nonprofit throughout the county, probably the, maybe the, the largest nonprofit through, through um, for the county. Um, it provides services to, to all types of people, uh, from small children um, all the way to seniors. Uh, it's the primary sponsor of the Pride Center here in San Mateo. Um, the most interaction we have with Star Vista is through their First Chance facility, which is located in Burlingame. And what we've recognized in um, uh, here at San Mateo is, you know, um, this, this primarily addresses folks who are arrested or taken into custody for for drunk driving or being, or public intoxication or something like that. Um, we uh, you know, going to jail is a pretty traumatic event. Um, and people make mistakes and they make poor choices. Um, and this provides us an alternative to taking somebody to jail as a result of that mistake or poor choice. Um, it, there's a, the, the, the facility in, in Burlingame um, has a bed there. They're required to stay there for four to six hours. Um, there's some type of, um, that they have their own rules until they can ensure that that person is uh, is, is, is no longer under the influence and, and can, and can leave and, and be safe. Um, there's a, there's a ton of benefits to this uh, to this program. W- one I mentioned is there's the stigma of going to jail and having to go through that traumatic um, um, uh, of, uh, experience is lessened. Um, you do get a ticket with a court date um, when you're, when you're dropped off at, at first chance. Um, but in addition to that, you're also provided with services right then and there uh, regarding um, you know, um, alcohol or drug treatment, um, a- any type of medical needs you may have. If you're having problems at home with housing or family or you need counseling or, or there's a mental health issue or even, and even legal support, all of that is available at this facility. Um, which uh, is obviously, y- you're not gonna get most, you know, any of that um, by sitting in a holding cell in county jail waiting to, to sober up to go home. So, we've recognized the value of that. First Chance has been so good that they've even expanded their service where when we do run into homeless or transient individuals who aren't ready to accept long-term housing services, but just want to get off the street for the night, um, they'll take, the, we'll get, we'll um, we'll give those folks a ride to First Chance. And as long as they're cooperative and um, and not a threat to anyone else, um, First Chance has been great in accepting those, those folks. The only um, in, in, this is common practice for us. Uh, all of our officers are directed to use First Chance for, for driving under the influence arrest and, and, and other under the influence type uh, cases. Um, with the only exception being if the person they're arrested poses any type of threat or is combative or, or, or violent in any way, the staff at First Chance is not prepared to deal with that. So as long as they're cooperative and co- and uh, and are go along with the program, um, this is our first uh, alternative um, to uh, to, to those types of cases. There is a cost. Um, I'll be um, very straightforward. It's cheaper to take people to jail. Um, there's, there's really no cost for us to, to book individuals into county jail for these types of crimes. Um, for, at First Chance, it, it charges us by use. Um, and you'll see the, the numbers um, there, the, of how often we use it. We are consistently the o- the, the agency that uses it the most. Um, and we're, we're looking at a budget of about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars for First Chance um, uh, services. And um, there, there's a, there's a very complicated formula that First Chance uses for its funding source. It takes the um, the, the frequency of use amongst all of the police agencies. Um, it takes its total cost. It, 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 um, it comes up with some, some creative formula and um, and we anticipate that our cost is gonna be about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars this year. So we talked about um, our youth diversion pro- uh, our, our Youth Services Bureau and I, I just want to touch on that. Um, again, we have a partnership with county probation uh, at no cost to the, to, to the city or the police department. They uh, they, we have a probation officer that works here at the police department full-time to deal with the juvenile diversion and case management. Um, again, our sole focus um, with our, our diversion and youth services uh, bureau, which includes school resource officers, PAL, um, uh, all of our, all of our uh, juvenile detective um, is to keep young people out of the criminal justice system. Um, and you'll see the numbers which you saw on a previous slide is, 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 is how successful we've been in doing that. Um, and there's two ways you can end up in diversion, um, if you're a, if you're a young person. Um, one is typically a school resource officer will identify um, um, a student that may be displaying behaviors of not necessarily um, getting caught committing a crime, but displaying behaviors that are, that go beyond disciplinary issues at the school and, and border on um, uh, criminal, the criminal nature. And, and what we'll do is when we recognize those red flags, we'll approach the student, their family and we'll, and we'll offer them an, an opportunity to voluntarily uh, participate in the diversion program in an effort to kind of get ahead of, of a potential problem or issue. And the other more common manner for, for young people to enter our diversion program is when they do in fact, commit some type of crime. Historically, if, if a young person committed a crime, we'd fill out a police report. Um, depending on the nature of the crime, they'd be taken to juvenile hall up in Hillcrest, um, regardless of whether they, or, or to their, or maybe released to their parents. Regardless, that, that report would go to the district attorney's office to file criminal charges. Well, now we have an alternative with our diversion program where um, we, we don't refer those cases to the district attorney's office. Uh, rather, we establish a curriculum um, within a diversion program that requires participat- participation from the, the young person and their family members uh, to complete um, an extensive diversion program which um, incorporates education, counseling, um, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a, um, a process that takes several months. Um, but successful completion of that, the incentive for that is that, that, that criminal act or the, the mistake that they made um, will be, will go away. And it will not, it will not um, have the, the um, the baggage or the tail that it would, would have otherwise if they had, uh, if they had been, if they had gone through the, the uh, or been entered into the criminal justice program. Um, you know, you can't shake that once that happens. And um, and this gives them an opportunity to, to, to uh, to not have to go through that process and not um, not have that issue. Uh, we uh, we recognize that, you know, school attendance is uh, is, is one of the um, uh, uh, telling points when people and students are, are getting into trouble or, or doing stuff that they shouldn't do. So we participate in the attendance review board, usually monitor about twenty students or so a year, um, as well as a threat assessment. Um, and um, uh, an evaluation um, process, well, looking, uh, identifying students who are den- who are displaying behaviors that um, that may rise above typical disciplinary issues. I do want to emphasize that um, we make a point um, to not the, the ta- not have the SROs involved in what would be your traditional um, uh, school disciplinary issues. Uh, if you're anything like me, as a student, you didn't pay attention to class a lot and sometimes you talked out of turn and stuff like that. That's not what the SROs are about. Um, they're, they're looking for kids who, who maybe don't have the foundation or the um, the resources that um, that most kids have, uh, which may lead them down the wrong path. And we're trying to uh, to give them an alternative rather than to go into a, a system that um, it's hard to get out of. Uh, the GREAT program, as I mentioned earlier, is a huge part of that. Um, about eight or nine hundred kids a year go through that program. One, one nice little note is um, the graduating classes of all three public high schools in San Mateo in twenty nineteen were all great kids. They all had completed the GREAT program. So that's kind of a, kind of a neat, uh, neat fact. Um, here is just um, this is a, this is just a quick snapshot, an example of, of um, our, our diversion efforts. And this is just middle schools in, in the city. You'll notice that the most important thing here is the green line. It represents um, per- cases referred to the district attorney's office. And you can see in uh, in uh, twenty thirteen, we were uh, we were sending about half of these cases to the DA's office to be evaluated for prosecution. Um, and this year we didn't send any. So um, we uh, we, we're pretty proud of the, the diversion efforts and we're very, very grateful to the probation department for the partnership that we've built here because it's been a, it's been um, uh, very, very worthwhile and we think it's been beneficial to uh, to young people who are in need. And then I think um, San Mateo is blessed with a very robust PAL program. Uh, it's a partnership with Park and Rec. Park and Rec is, is as much of a, a player in this as anybody else and, and um, and uh, Director Canzian over at Park and Rec deserves as much credit as anybody. I mean, she won the founding um, uh, members of this and, and really got it going. Uh, COVID uh, get threw a curveball at us this year and um, and we weren't able to um, to provide the, the programming that we normally would. And it was pretty neat. Staff got together and said, hey, hey, how can we, how can we still have an impact on these, these young people? And we know that we're serving kids who, who are uh, otherwise underserved, um, or are in some type of need. And um, they came up with this idea to uh, to serve pantry boxes to um, a lot of our PAL families um, who uh, who, who are in need and, and who COVID impacted um, greatly during this diff- uh, especially with the health order during this diff- uh, difficult time. And uh, I think today we've served over eighteen hundred pantry boxes. I think we're up to two hundred a week. Um, I've been part of a couple of those and um, to see the sense of relief and the impact that we're having on families who really need it. It's a box of not only food, but there's other staples that'll get a family of four, you know, through the next three or four days. Um, it really, it really makes a huge difference. And kudos to the, to the folks who came up with that great idea because it, 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 it wasn't me. Uh, they even went so far as last week, um, we uh, in addition to the pantry boxes, we um, we put together activity boxes for kids recognizing that, hey, they're, they're probably going stir crazy. There, there's not a lot going on and, and they uh, they got a box of activities, you know, um, uh, sidewalk chalk and, you know, uh, and, and um, books and, and, and other activities that they could uh, that they could, toys and stuff like that that they could um, they could um, utilize while they're uh, they're kind of cooped up and they're not with their friends and they're not going to school. And they're not, and they're not in our PAL programs, which is our biggest disappointment. So we're, we're trying to uh, do what we can to, to reach them regardless of uh, of um, the current situation. Okay, so moving forward, just an overall um, um, uh, look at what we're doing um, uh, from a, from kind of a big picture perspective. I mentioned that we uh, we receive over a hundred and seventy thousand calls a year. About thirty thousand calls are emergency nine-one-one calls. One number that's not here is we do get about the same number that are non-emergency calls. So our dispatchers are dispatching about sixty-five thousand calls to police officers in the field every year. Of those calls, and I'll explain why we list, why we chose uh, these um, um, rows that we did. Um, of these calls, the reason we think this is important is, is just over eight thousand of those, when we say cases, those represent uh, incidents where crime reports or some type of report had to be authored and a case number was taken. So it rose to the level of, hey, this is something that either a crime was committed or it um, there, an investigation was started or there's something that was significant enough where um, the officer came back and wrote a report. Of those, about uh, just over two thousand of those or, or um, uh, result in so- uh, some type of arrest. And now arrest doesn't mean that um, all of these uh, twenty-two hundred people went to jail. We mentioned First Chance earlier. Um, those individuals who commit misdemeanors in the field, depending on the nature of the misdemeanor, uh, can be, are issued a citation uh, with a court date. Uh, but it technically counts as an arrest if it's a, if it's a misdemeanor. So that twenty-two hundred number, um, while they are technically arrests and they have to uh, um, you know, make a court appearance and uh, and they're afforded the due process, um, they technically do count, um, count as an arrest. We included domestic violence, uh, domestic violence row here only because in a subsequent slide, we're gonna talk about calls for service rather than individual cases. And we'll, and typically, we, we get, domestic violence calls can be called in as any number of things, including disturbances, welfare checks. So we really don't know wh- what we're walking into until we get to, until we get um, on scene and determine what's happening. The eighty-nine, the number eighty-nine here for, for the past fiscal year represents um, eighty-nine instances where somebody had um, committed, assaulted um, someone and committed an act of domestic violence. Um, so those are new cases where somebody had been uh, somebody had been assaulted. The twenty-nine, and we, we include both of those because we, they're directly related is tip, um, uh, the judges in our county, we have a nice process about um, issuing um, emergency protective orders to victims of, of domestic violence. Um, and we can do that, the, an officer can do that from the scene, which is, which is nice over the phone with judges. Twenty-nine of those arrests um, or investigations um, are of people violating those types of restraining orders that are directly rela- related to um, domestic violence cases. Here's an idea of where we're going with drunk driving cases. We only include this on this slide because it's not a traditional call for service. Um, a traffic stop can result in a, in a driving under the influence arrest without the officer, you know. We uh, we uh, we go through a, a series of tests to determine whether somebody is driving under the influence and there's no assumption made ahead of time. And then the Keller Center referrals, these numbers refer to serious sexual assaults. So we have um, the Keller Center is located and we, and we pay for this service to the county. It's located at County Hospital. Um, obviously, um, you know, having investigated these crimes, if there's, I, I can't think of a, a more difficult crime to investigate, but dealing with a victim who's experienced this type of um, uh, trauma is, is difficult. And uh, the Keller Center not only allows, you know, not only obtains necessary evidence that the investigators need to file and prosecute the case with um, in the form of a medical exam, but it also To file and prosecute the case with in the form of a medical exam, but it also provides. A more a more softer atmosphere or warmer atmosphere where there's counseling available and. An interview can be can be taken place in a in an environment that's much different than coming to a police department. So. The only reason we include these numbers is because there's no other way to capture them. It kind of gives us an idea of how often we're using that. Resource and and the number of serious sexual assaults that we're looking at. So this is this is a more. I don't want to say general, but a more day to day slide as far as the types of calls that we're we're getting. And I'll I'll direct your attention to a couple, a couple lines initially. One is disturbance calls, which you can see are the highest number. These are. The disturbance calls and welfare checks. Are are most dangerous calls. That we experience only because they're they're usually fairly vague in nature. A disturbance call can be anything from a fight at a bar. It can be a fight in a residence. It can be loud. It can be a music complaint. It can be any type of. Sometimes people will just call up and say, we need the police and we'll hang up. And so those calls are are usually pretty vague and officers. Don't really know what they're walking into. The same can be said of welfare checks, which I'll talk about in a second, but. You know, if somebody calls and says, hey, there's someone breaking into my car or they're breaking into my house or whatever it is, that's still a call that that there's there's risk involved and we know that we're. There's potential for for there. There's a danger there. However, we have a pretty good idea of what the motive. Motivation of the person that we're we're seeking is and and the the nature of the crime that we're that we're investigating. When it comes to. Disturbance or welfare checks, that's not the case at all. Oftentimes, we're just we're we're going. With very little information and and that's why it it can be a little bit more dangerous. As far as mental, we talked about our response to mental health with the smart vehicle and a lot of times we are asked by adult and child protective services. To respond to residences where. You know, for example, the schools are mandatory mandatory reporters. If they see a child that has some bruising or they or they have some information that may suggest that there's some abuse in the home. They'll call us and they'll ask us to go out there and do a quick a a preliminary investigation. And if we do, if we do suspect that there is abuse, we will call them and work it jointly with them and come up with an immediate safety plan. However, if we do an investigation and determine that there is no merit to that call, we can let them know and they can close that case out. So we we assist them. And then the last three down here are important only because these are extremely difficult calls for police officers and for dispatchers. Sometimes folks will call in suspicious activity in their neighborhood. And that's fine. And we want we want people to 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 not be hesitant about calling the police and and reporting suspicious activity. That helps us. Greatly in combating crime. However, we're we 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 do kind of press people for to articulate the nature of the suspicious activity. And and sometimes it frustrates the callers, frankly, that they call us. They'll they'll say, hey, there's somebody sitting in a car. Out in front of my house or there's somebody walking down the street. And they just don't look right or I've never seen that car before or whatever it is. We'll go to those calls, but we won't necessarily contact the individuals that are being identified. We'll we'll drive by to see is there something that the caller. Failed to tell us about whether there is any merit to to that person or that vehicle being suspicious. What's the activity? What are the circumstance? What are the circumstances that make it suspicious? So. I just wanted to clarify that. I mean, some of them are no brainers. If it's three o'clock in the morning and there's somebody walking down the street. Checking door handles on all the cars. Yeah, that's suspicious and we're gonna we're gonna contact that person and we're gonna we're going to. To to see what's going on and hopefully prevent some type of crime. But if there's somebody sitting in their car making a phone call or walking down the street. And they're and the the caller doesn't recognize that person, that's not enough for us to to stop and and detain folks. So we really have to use. Some discretion with these types of calls and and we work those work through those the best we can. It's kind of a. A no win for for officers and dispatchers sometimes because. If we're asking a lot of questions, we're we're perceived as being difficult. And if we go by but we don't contact those individuals, we're seen as not doing our jobs. But that's just, as you can see, we get a large number of these types of calls and they and we have to work through those on a case by case or call by call basis. So what does a police officer's day look like? This is. I I I give you this information with a caveat. So. The sixty two percent what you see in nineteen twenty represents dispatched calls for service. The the I don't believe that this graph adequately and we're working on trying to figure out a better way to to measure these. The these times, but these are these are just calls for service. They don't indicate how much time is spent on those calls for service. So while. Sixty two percent of the the. Of the incidents that our officers are dealing with, they are dispatched to those calls. I mean, somebody called the police and asked them to respond in regard to something. If thirty eight percent are. Preventative measures, whether it's traffic enforcement or combating auto burglaries or whatever it is. The the misleading portion of this slide is when we do go to the calls for service, you know, we're often there for we could be there anywhere from fifteen, twenty minutes to several hours. So that sixty two, well, sixty two percent of the calls. May be dispatched, you know, by an external report. You know, we could be spending up to eighty percent of our time dealing with those calls just because they take some time to work through. So I I give you this slide and this information. With that. With that caveat. So we often get questions about how many officers do you have and and what's the relation to their population and and what should what should it be? And all of those are good questions. And similar to response times, there is no national or or state standard regarding the number of officers per population. You'll see in other parts of the country, these numbers, the ratio will be in the twos, threes, and sometimes even fours. And and usually it's. It equates to the compensation to or the cost of personnel and. And our officers are paid well in in this area and that means that they're more costly and 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 we don't have the. The luxury of having robot real robust. Staffing levels when it comes to our ratios per per the population. What we did here is we tried to pick some cities that were of decent size. We also picked out a couple that had some. Pretty good call volumes like Menlo Park and San Bruno that were busier cities like we are. And included them too, just to kind of give you a snapshot of of where we were. The overall average of the of the larger peninsula cities is is one point one eight. You can see we're right at one point one. There was a the the quarter plan at Bay Meadows Plan from two thousand eight. It did. List a target of one point two five. But but that can be difficult to to get to, you know, and this population is based on. Twenty nineteen. It'll be interesting to see what the new census numbers are. So that is. That's basically our budget, our staffing, how we spend money, where it goes and and. And and how we're set up or how we're how we're established as a. As an apartment. I'm going to turn now to our policy manual. And and this will be much more brief. As you'll, as I I think I've explained to many of you and and in some of our town hall meetings. One of my first tasks here was to establish a policy review committee. To go through to review our policies. So I felt comfortable putting my name on the policy manual. I think. As of earlier this week, I did approve the policy manual. So it should have my name on it now. I I believe it's been uploaded. In its current form. We our policies provided to us through a vendor called Lexipol. Which also provides the policy manual for all law enforcement agencies in the county. It's a vendor that provides law enforcement or that provides policy manuals for all public safety agencies. But but a lot of police agencies. The advantage to using. To having this relationship is for us to. You know, our our policies are impacted regularly by changes in statute, you know, legislative actions, changes in case law. And an examination of best practices. For us to continually monitor that would require full time staff to do that. Lexipol staff is is comprised of public safety professionals, attorneys, and we get regular updates from them when there are changes to. To state and federal law, case law and and best practices which allow us to regularly update. The policy manual. I often get questions of how often do you review the manual? I like to conduct an annual review of the manual with our committee. However, Lexipol affords us the opportunity to continually review. The manual because we get the we get those updates from them and then we don't we don't have to blindly accept them as gospel. We we. We review them, make sure that they're consistent with with what we're, you know, our goals and and what we're doing. Some of them were mandated to accept. But others we review. And so it it results in a in a regular review of policy. Through a through a natural org- organic process. As you can see, we have a pretty robust policy manual. It's ten chapters with one hundred fifty nine policies and over seven hundred pages. It's available to the public at the at the link there provided. It's also, if you don't want to write down that link, it's also on the police department. Web page, so feel free to go there and you'll find it. But again, it took last few months for the committee to review those. I'm grateful for the hard work that. Staff at all levels of the organization, sworn, non sworn, officers, command staff, supervisors, they all. They all participated in in reviewing the the manual and I am grateful for their work. Tonight, we're going to focus primarily on the use of force policy because that seems to be the. Where that is the focus of the of the day. So you you have a copy of our our use of force policy, which was which was attached to the packet. We believe that it it does reflect the best practices as they exist now and and the 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 policy recognizes the value of all human life. It requires de-escalation. It identifies a use of force continuum. It does require that officers who observe other officers acting outside a policy to intercede. And stop them from 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 acting that way. It prohibits the car carotid restraint, which some folks refer to as the chokehold. There's a difference, which I don't have to get into, but both are prohibited by policy. I'm going to come back to shooting at or from moving vehicles and requiring a a verbal warning in just a second to 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 talk about those specifically. But we cleaned up. I I I believe that we've clearly articulated our our reporting requirements for use of force. And we've established a robust review process to make sure that all of our uses of force are compliant with policy. Moving back up to requiring a verbal warning. Our policy does require a verbal warning before the use of deadly force. However, there is language in there that that. Recognizes that not all situations are the same and that it is not always feasible to provide that warning. For example. Officers, when officers are dealing with a critical incident. Sometimes those incidents are long and they're drawn out and there's a long. A long ongoing conversation with an individual who 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 we're dealing with. In other cases, the situation is is over in a split split second and it's 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 over before it starts, basically. And we didn't want to put officers in a position or or establish a policy that was not safe or or not. Not reasonable. And if somebody is is trying to kill or or cause great bodily injury to. Someone else or the officer themselves and they're and they're acting. Immediately, we did not want, we we thought it was irresponsible and and dangerous to require that verbal warning. And those those the time that it would take to provide that warning could have a devastating impact. Now. That's not this does not give the officer an out. Each use of force is reviewed. And if it was determined that a verbal warning was warranted and was feasible, then that officer would be. Found to be acting outside of policy. So it's it's not a free pass. It just recognizes what. Sometimes the reality is of the of the situation and it it provides officers. That that we it recognizes the difficult position that officers can be in. Similarly, with shooting at or from moving vehicles, I dislike shooting at or from moving vehicles more than anybody else. I think it's unsafe. I think it's it it can be it can be reckless. It can be it can be a. It can be a very, very dangerous, dangerous thing to do. And it's highly discouraged. I think our policy reflects that. However, we have seen both at the local level, the state level and. Nationally and throughout the world that that vehicles can be used as weapons. Whether it's a terrorist attack driving into a group of folk, group of people. Or where vehicles use as a weapon targeting one or or a small number of individuals. And to completely ban. The shooting at at moving vehicles would require officers to stand there and watch that happen and take no action. And. While the circumstance for shooting at a at a vehicle is extreme, we recognize that it can't happen. And the and the same the same goes for this as the as the verbal warning. You know, should this should this happen and and an officer do this? It will be evaluated and if it doesn't meet those, if if the circumstances did not meet or did not warrant those actions. That officer would be found to 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 be acting outside of outside of policy. So. I just wanted to address those two where I think that they're they're addressed well in the policy. However, we do want to, you know. We have well trained, talented officers who 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 really care about doing the right thing. And I think that. It was important to recognize the difficult circumstances that they can be placed in and give them the the ability to act accordingly. Just to give a frame of reference, and I only and I'll be winding up here pretty quick. As far as use of force compared in in. In reference to our total of number number of contacts with individuals on an annual basis. You can see that last year, you know, we had sixty eight thousand interactions with individuals. There were fifty five uses of force. We identify uses of forces, everything from, you know, grabbing somebody's arm who who is fighting with somebody or is not being. You know, is 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 being placed under arrest and is not cooperating to to using tools such as chemical, you know, pepper spray. A taser or even a firearm. So anything beyond somebody voluntarily or cooperating. You know, most of the time, if you tell somebody they're under arrest and ask them to turn around and put their hands behind their back. Most folks are cooperative. Thank goodness. However, some aren't. Sometimes we, you know, we we need to break up fights or we need to stop people from fighting with us. And and we need to use these tools to to use those types of force. So. Fifty five instances of force in comparison to to the 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 just over sixty eight thousand contacts that we had last year. As far as types of force, the vast majority of the of the uses of force are are those that I described where we're grabbing somebody's arm, we're we're. We're we're trying to place them in some type of control hold that would allow us to put handcuffs on them. Or we're prevent, you know, we're trying to prevent them from from striking somebody else or striking us and we're using our hands to do that. We the we the second most, the yellow there is represented would be taser usage and then pepper spray. I think the pepper spray, I think we have one two incidents. The canine, I think, we had two incidents where a a dog was used. And then we had one one shooting incident, which I think we're all aware of in September of last year. So that represents the type of force that's used. Most of them are trying to, you know, just trying to. You know, grab somebody's arm to overcome some resistance, prevent them from hurting somebody or or to safely take them into into custody. So that's all that's all I really have as far as the the budget and. And our our policy and the updated policy.
Chief, before the second half of your presentation. Could you go back to the use of force, the A can't wait? And then you can run through the second half of your presentation quickly. So. With your changes to our use of force policy manual, the the six top ones would all. Meet the A can't wait standard and you, I think, clearly explained the two caveats. Or the two asterisks with regards to requiring the verbal warning when feasible and and shooting it. Shooting at cars is just. Not a good idea at all. Except for the very narrow times that you outlined. Is that correct? Is that is that how that lines up to the A can't wait?
That that is correct. And I I should I should have mentioned shooting at cars. Our policy goes as far as to direct the officers to not. You know, a vehicle can only be used as a weapon against you if 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 it can hit you. Right? Or or so it it our our policy goes as far as to direct officers to do everything to avoid placing themselves in that circumstance. So. It goes beyond saying, don't do it. It says, hey, don't put yourself in a situation where that can happen. Now, can they always comply with that? No, but I think that. There are situations where we're we're changing the the thought process there where. You know, if if you're found to put yourself in a situation where you shouldn't have. That would be in contrast to the to the order, I mean, to the to the policy.
Is it fair to say all these enhancements that you have included are to try to make the public more safe?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you very much, chief. Thank you for a great presentation. Thank you for being extremely thorough. I think. All of the people who have joined us, including the hundred and nine attendees. Have been educated tonight on what San Mateo officers are all about. So I I appreciate that. I want to open it up to the rest of the council for questions if you're ready. Let's go to Diane Papin.
One quick question, chief. If you could go to the slide that has the shifts to them.
You're challenging my technical aptitude here, but I'm do, I will do that.
I think it was pretty early on.
While you're doing that, I'm going to ask attendees to start raising their hands. It's a good idea. It's 6:15 or 6:13 now. So if everybody wants to ask a question or make a comment, could raise their hands, I'll have a good idea of how much time we need to allot for public comment. Thanks, everybody.
Slide 13, chief.
Yeah, there we are.
So when I, the biggest shift that you have is, uh, where's the one that has, didn't you have one that has 15 officers?
Yeah, so from, from 2:00 PM to 10:00 AM, we have three, we have 15 officers. That's our, that's our minimum staffing level.
Okay. And so if I do the math right, based on current census numbers, which we know will likely go up this year, you got 104,000 people. So during that shift, that gives you about one sworn officer, assuming everybody's there. You got 15. That's about one sworn officer per 7,000 people, correct?
Yeah, and, and it's not assuming everybody's there. If we don't meet, so I, I just want to make it clear that the, the numbers here at the bottom, we do not, we never go below these numbers. So these are mandatory numbers. So if we don't meet the 15, somebody is brought in on with that, that, so yes, your, your, your question is, the, the answer to your question is yes, but we would not go under that.
Right. And then sometimes it's even with those other shifts, it's much less sworn officers per however many people. But that's the most you would have, one officer per 7,000 people during your day shift.
Yeah, now, now there could be some overlap where from, depending on what our staffing levels are like that day, where people are getting ready to go home and there could be an hour or two where we have a couple extra. But, but yeah, 15 is our, our, our minimum number to have, which, which is where you, unfortunately, we, we're usually at our minimum staffing level numbers just due to accommodating day-to-day life, vacations, sit calls, you know, vacant positions, that's just, that's just the reality of it.
Got it. So if you could take me to the slide that says how many calls you get a year? I'm sorry, I should have made a note of it before I... Ah, nope, back, back, back.
Back?
Didn't she just... Right? Back? Sorry. Go back one.
I think we want to go to something like that? Is that what you're looking for?
No, you had one that said you get 170,000 calls. Of those, you dispatch 62,000, is that right?
Yes. Well, I will get you there, see.
It's got green on it.
There we go. So we get 170, uh, oh, that might be a different one there that will go back.
Right now? All right, here. Oh, there, in that green thing. So you, on your dispatch, you have 170,000 calls that come in from the public, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And of those, you dispatch about 65,000, 67,000 calls you were, are required to dispatch? And then is that correct that then we add into that, on top of that, the additional 25,000 to 28,000 offer initiate, officer initiated, correct?
Yes, we're, yes, that's correct.
All right.
Looking at about 80,000 to 90,000 incidents that they're handling. So about, about, of the 170,000 calls, just over half of them are calls that are, that are, I'm, I'm sorry, you're looking at about 80,000 or 90,000 calls where there's actually interaction on the street.
Got it. Where they're dispatched. And for 115, 115 sworn officers to do that work for 104,000 people, which is probably going to be more like 110,000 when we get done with the census. Do I have all those numbers right?
Yeah. I mean, we're, we're, there's no, there's no, I mean, I'm pretty sure where you're going and we are, like most police departments, we are, we, we are busy. You know, we, there's a lot of calls for service and, and we're asking our officers to do a lot when it comes to just volume of calls. But, but we're, you know, we're, we're no different than most police departments around as far as, as far as having that challenge.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay, we have Rick and we have Eric who both had their hands up. I'm going to go to Rick who raised his hand first and I want to make sure everybody is mindful of the fact that we have 24 hands raised. It's 6:17, we have 43 minutes until our regular meeting starts. So take it away, Rick.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions. First, regarding, you said sometimes the officers are acting outside of policy. Can you describe what happens to an officer who is found to be acting outside of policy?
Well, so it depends on the policy. So if it's a use of force policy, I will tell you that that's extremely serious because if you're acting outside of use of force policy, that means you, you really have no legal basis to be, to be conducting what you're doing. So that would be something that would be, that would initiate an internal affairs investigation and may well be reviewed by the district attorney's office. However, there are other, you know, the policy is 700 pages long and there's some, you know, there's uniform policy, there's, you know, we're, we're an employer like anybody else. There's a tardiness, you know, issue, there's, there's all types of, of things like that where a, uh, uh, those types of violations, if they're very, very minor and it's a first offense, it may be a supervisor sat down to talk with you. If it's, if it's a habitual, we'll deal with it like we would deal with any other employee. But if you're talking about use of force or other of the, the, the high liability policies, an alleged violation of those will go directly to internal affairs and i-if it's serious enough, it will be referred to the district attorney's office.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to be mindful of the time, so I just have one question. And first, I just wanted this to disclose again that I'm, serve on the Police Activities League Board. My question, chief, is that, you know, you've been serving as our police chief for now, I guess, four months and you have, you inherited a police manual and you have gotten the opportunity to hear from many, many residents and, and this council in terms of getting feedback and what was in the, in the manual. And you said that you, you really wanted to make it your own before you put your name on it. Can you give me and the public a couple examples, if you have them, of, of instances where you saw the manual as it existed before you came and you've took the feedback from what you've heard from the community to make it better and more appropriate, especially in light of, of everything that's happened since the, the Black Lives Matter demonstrations? Thank you.
Sure, sure. So first, I mean, obviously, the first example I can think of is the use of force policy. And, you know, incorporating de-escalation, I think de-escalation was implied and, and a use of force continuum was implied within the policy. However, it wasn't clearly articulated. I don't think that it's, it's due to anybody's fault. I just think that it was, there was, there was never, nobody ever thought to, to clearly articulate that. I think that was important. The, the, the carotid restraint or the, what we would consider a chokehold, I don't, I don't have a big problem. I mean, that's just not something that's used for, that, I mean, I, I don't remember the last time I, I've ever seen it used. So I think that that was, that was something that was, that was a change that we made. And I think that the, the reporting and review process for use of force, we, we provided some clarity there. There are other policies though that I've, that we've also talked about and, and, and again, I don't want to overplay this. I think that stepping into, I, I stepped into a very strong, well-managed department with a lot of talented people, but little things like the body worn camera issue, and it's not really a little thing, in my mind, it's a big thing. There was some gray area on when you, when you activate your body worn camera and when you don't. And now there's not. I, you know, I'm, I'm very clear that I want those activated, but you know, when you're going on calls. And so I think that those are a couple of examples where I kind of saw some, an opportunity to, to make things more clear and, and take some ambiguity out of the, the manual and we're, we're able to do that. I do want to credit that I, I, I made my observations known to staff and I, I do want to give staff a lot of credit. They did a lot of the heavy lifting here with my guidance and, and this isn't something that I just came and, and mandated. This was a collaborative effort by, by staff members and they did a, they did a good job. And I think it's a, it's a nice, uh, current and applicable manual at this point. Thank you.
One more question. Go ahead, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I, I was hoping that you could talk a little bit about how, when you update the policies, how those policies are then integrated into the training programs and then, and then knowing that we have changing demographics, we have an aging population, we have an increased homeless population, how, how do you see our, our training really matching up with those, those shifts in, in population and community needs?
So, great question. So first of all, when the, when the policy manual is updated, we have a process where everybody acknowledges reading the policy. So everybody is held, held, they're, they're, they're held responsible for the, it's hard to do that with 700 pages. So we, we, we push them out policy by policy so everybody had a chance to read it, acknowledge it and, and, and so we know that they, they're familiar with the policy. We have a annual training plan that, that is, that's established by our training unit and it's, it requires the review of policies on an annual basis. So we are, we are clear that, that those policies are, are trained to, we train to our policy manual. So there, there's a relationship between the manual and the, I mean, the policy manual and the training manual. And I saw, I just saw the first draft of our training manual last week. I, I asked them to make some edits and some changes so that, and that's also will be a public document. So people will be able to, to review that as well. When it comes to, uh, the providing services to, to diverse populations, whether they be vulnerable populations or otherwise, I think that our existing training is pretty strong. However, I continue, I think that we continue to learn and we continue to learn from best practices and, and, and we, we incorporate those into our training model every year. There's a checklist of, of what needs to be trained to and it includes all of the areas that you've mentioned. I will tell you that I like to develop a theme within each training manual for the year in addition to the required training. So we can, we can kind of cover those and, and, and cover those every few years. You can't, you can't have the same theme every year, but you can, you can provide the required training and make sure that we're on the right track. So I think we have a strong training plan that I think will be finalized here shortly. And I think that it, it provides for a well-rounded, well-trained staff.
I had one more question, which is about recruiting a diverse workforce. And I, I wanted to ask, you know, specifically, you, you did a great job outlining and being very transparent about where we stand today in terms of our, our workforce diversity. And I was wondering, what steps are you taking to further recruit a diverse workforce?
Yeah, so it's a, we are, we are, every, everybody's seeking to be more and more diverse and that's been, that's been the case for a long time. We are very, very open about it. You can go to our accountability page on our website and it actually shows the demographics of our police department. We, we do a good job in some areas and other areas we do, we, we could do better. I personally would, I think we have some extremely talented women that work for our organization. I'd love to see more. But, and we, and we take steps and when I mentioned recruiting and the efforts that we make into recruiting, we do try to market ourselves to, to a diverse workforce and we're very selective. And ironically, the, the, the more diverse the candidate, the more sought after the candidate, which is, which has become the, 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 the case, you know? And we do work with, I mean, I, we, we met with the NAACP a few months ago. We have relationships with, with groups and they know, they know of our desire to, to be as diverse as we can. And we are continually trying to, to market ourselves to the people, to those, those groups of people. It's a competitive process. It's a very, very competitive process. But I think we, and, and this is no, has nothing to do with me. I take no credit for this. I think that I walked into a, a police department that was as diverse as any in, in our area and, and I just hope to build on that and, and continue to seek, to seek those, those types of candidates. It's difficult becoming a police officer. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a long, arduous process. And to, to, to find talented, well-educated, capable people is, is a long and, and difficult process. And being diverse is just as important and we need to, we need to continue to, to focus there, which I think we have.
Thank you, chief. We have 32 minutes and 27 speakers. So I'm going to remind everybody, this is just for public comment during the study session on the police department budget and policy discussion, starting with Michael Winehour. You have one minute. Michael, are you still on mute?
There we go. Nobody had unmuted me on the other side. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. I just wanted to offer my support for the police because it's an incredibly hard job. I think on the aggregate, SMPD really stands out as an extraordinary police department by almost any measure, especially under the constraints they operate. Presentation today shows that SMPD is at the forefront of law enforcement best practices and has comprehensive use of force policies already in place that emphasizes the value of all life, de-escalation, et cetera. It's impossible for every contingency to have a protocol, but SMPD seems to have a culture that seeks to identify and codify as many as possible. There needs to be strict accountability for any organization entrusted with public safety and empowered to use deadly force. SMPD, like any other org, has had some bad apples, but with proper policies and protocols that ensure accountability, the reputation and trust in SMPD is very strong. Every org can always be better and it's the city's job to maintain oversight, to ensure, for example, that no collective bargaining agreements are entered into that compromise accountability and allow bad act...
Thank you, Michael.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you. JD Hyman?
Thank you. My name is JD and I've lived and worked in San Mateo the last couple of years. I'm very grateful for all the work the city council is doing to review the police department's use of force policies, performance metrics, and how they fit into the broader ecosystem. That said, I'm concerned though that cutting any budget without studying and addressing the root causes of crime, as well as racist use of the police by citizens, is reckless. I see it as jumping onto a bandwagon, escaping police from any things out of their control. I'd like to know what the city government is doing to study and address these more specifically, what's being done to assist citizens of color in creating businesses that don't just create jobs, but create businesses they own and consequently can help them generate wealth and eliminate the need to commit crime in the first place? And also what's being done to educate the public on when it's okay and not okay to call the police, to help reduce racism by our own citizens? Because until we address these, I, I think crime is going to continue and so is the need for police.
Thank you, JD. Lisa Nash?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I want to salute Chief Barbarini and his entire team for their longstanding commitment to community policing and honest efforts to listen to the community and improve. By way of full disclosure, I am on the San Mateo Neighborhood Watchboard. I've heard many officers say they wish their social work and psychiatric health professional colleagues had more resources available. And I've heard many people whose loved ones suffer from dementia, that they need mental health support, not a forcible solution. These are actionable, positive recommendations we should invest in, not into funding the police. Finally, I agree with the prior speaker that we need to widen our focus. We should take a hard look at the longstanding economic and social reasons for systemic racism in all areas of our community. We need to create new paths to economic and social advancement and invest in them, not just talk about them. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry White here. Unmute. Terry White here.
Hello?
Go ahead, Clara.
I wanted to share with you that I'm against defending the police. I've been a resident for the city, with the city of San Mateo since 1980 and I have lived in this county all my life. I'm a Latina. One of the many reasons I've chosen to stay in the city is because I feel safe. Safety is everything to me. However, I'm beginning to feel a bit nervous about the safety of those, of us that live in the Bay Area. Crime rates appear to be on the rise and the residents where I live are installing their security systems to discourage thieves and unwelcome trespassers. New laws have reduced felonies to misdemeanors, resulting in crimes that take advantage of the vulnerable. In my opinion, police presence and visibility is a significant factor that reduces crime, crimes of opportunity.
Thank you, Clara. Sayhada Thomas, thank you. Tara White here. Terry White here, go ahead.
Yes, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I sent the council members a letter last week that I assume you have read, so I'll not go over the items tonight. I would like to speak more broadly about this opportunity. I would like to speak more broadly about this opportunity we have to realign the city's priorities by way of funding and responsibilities in our community. This is about making our cities safer for all the neighborhoods, especially the most vulnerable. In the last 40 years, we have seen a massive expansion in the scope of policing. As we heard tonight, policing is happening in our schools in relation to homelessness, untreated mental health, and youth violence. In our city's budget, the police department's budget has gone up year after year, and that is now 38% of our general fund. To demonstrate that we, as a community, value, let us commit now to put more funds into neighborhood infrastructure, childcare, education, affordable housing, and mental health.
Thank you.
And let me quote from Margaret Wheatley.
Thank you, Terry.
All right.
Phone number ending in 789.
Good evening, San Mateo City Council. My name is Jared Jerusalem. I'm the California Director of Government Affairs for the Alzheimer's Association. My public comment is guided by the story of Gloria and her husband Arthur, who is living with Alzheimer's and is focused on officer training. Too often, individuals living with Alzheimer's can have their symptoms exacerbated by law enforcement who may not know how to engage individuals with dementia and can lead to traumatic events that ultimately deteriorate their condition. Ensuring that first responders are trained to appropriately engage with individuals with dementia is a priority for the association, as we have sponsored the Promoting Alzheimer's Awareness to Prevent Elder Abuse Act, a bipartisan bicameral bill that seeks to require the Department of Justice to prepare training materials available to law enforcement around the country. We would love to see cities like San Mateo take leadership on this important issue and consider efforts to better prepare your officers for those unique engagements with those living with Alzheimer's and dementia. And lastly, I would like to extend that the Alzheimer's Association has existing and free training materials available at ALZ.org.
Thank you so much. We will make use of that. Make a note, Chief. Thank you. Charme. Charme Navi.
Good evening. I'm Charme Navi, a San Mateo resident. Let's shift resources to ensuring people's basic needs are being met in the community, such as providing affordable housing, education, healthcare, and mental health resources. We do not need cops carrying guns in schools. Put these dollars towards education. Cops carrying guns should not be first responders to the homeless or people with mental illness. We should not be paying cops carrying guns to be delivering food via the Police Activities League. We can continue to provide these valuable resources without someone carrying a gun to do it. Furthermore, tasers are not a safe alternative to guns. They are unnecessary and kill people right here in San Mateo County, like Chinadu Okobi. At the last city council meeting in June, many residents in the community voiced a desire to start shifting funding away from the police, but the budget was passed anyway with some vague promise of a study session where the community would be given a seat at the table to influence change. However, we don't have an actual seat at the table. City Council gave the police.
Thank you, Charme. Thank you so much. Stephanie Reyes. Stephanie? Hold on. Let's unmute Stephanie.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
I really appreciate the information about the diversion programs, like GREAT and the partnerships, like those with Cora, Life Move, Smart, and Star Vista. It sounds like there are hundreds of individuals who are helped and diverted from the traditional criminal justice system each year. I think we should do a really better job on scaling those kinds of things up. It sounds like they are both, less than 1% of police interactions each year are diverted in that way, and also, less than 1% of the budget spent on those programs. I think we should do more. And also, it sounds like most of those alternatives still start with a police response and everything that brings, including the potential for an armed conflict. So, I really think the city should do more to shift towards different types of trained professionals as first responders. And there are many exciting alternative first responder programs in other cities for things like homelessness, intoxication, substance abuse, mental illness, et cetera. Berkeley is even talking about shifting traffic enforcement to a non-police entity. And I have to say, part of the reason I'm interested in this type of shift is that I am concerned about the racial disparities in policing in San Mateo County. The data I have is for the county, but I would love to hear more.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, Stephanie Berna.
Yes, hi. My name is Bernadette, and I'm a Foster City resident. I've been here 20 years. I'm in full support of the police department. I do not believe that we should be unfunding or defunding you guys. I recently met up with a fellow in San Francisco who was an organizer for the Black Lives Matter movement. He told me he's a full-pledged Marxist, who told me that the symbol of the Black Lives Matter is a Marxism symbol and that we need to demolish the police. We need to overturn everything that's happening here in America and replace it with full Marxism. And, yeah, I just wanted to pass on to you this unique opportunity that I had to speak with this individual.
Laura Hines. Go ahead, Laura. Laura, can you unmute?
Yes.
Thank you.
A family of four in San Mateo pays about $2,000 a year for the police department out of the general fund. Although I appreciate your efforts with First Chance Cares, Smart, I would like to see more of that, especially at a time when so many of our neighbors are stressed with COVID, housing, mental health, medical. This is a time when we can take a small percentage of the budget and invest more in community services that don't start with an armed policeman at the scene. Also, there could be mental health, trained mental health people to accompany police officers when mental health is expressed as the issue at the beginning of the call.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Flamin' Crunchyroll.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Thank you. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. I found it interesting that the police budget incorporates $46 million towards city guide facility maintenance costs and less than $1 million towards training. I understand that, you know, the funds are a more complicated issue, but I would like to see more of the budget being dedicated to training. I know that the police chief mentioned that training is very important. So, that would be nice to see a little bit more of cost going towards training. And then I would like to suggest, echoing what JD had said earlier, that we have some sort of education to guide public residents towards making conscious and well-justified calls of suspicious activity, considering during one of the PowerPoint slides.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Janice Blackstone.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I would like my full 60 seconds, please. We need the police. The police are first responders to a broad range of public safety issues and serious crime. Crime will not end if we abolish or defend the police. If the police are defended, there will be delayed response when people who are needed call 911. If we defund the police, those most affected will be the poor and marginalized. Wealthy neighborhoods will hire private security, as they are already doing. And poorer neighborhoods will have to defend for themselves. Delays in police response and lack of police capacity will increase. Fear of crime render victims of crime helpless and wreck havoc on communities, especially communities of color, even more so than is already the case. Additionally, show us statistics that San Mateo Police Department is not upheld.
Lex.
Hi, resident of San Mateo here. In June, the public demanded City Council defund the police and reinvest that money elsewhere. This meeting would not be happening without our efforts, yet City Council hasn't provided us with a seat at the table. We demand the chance to present our proposal on a Kahoots-like program. We demand our voices be heard beyond these absurdly rushed public comments. Further, we hear people decry systemic racism. Yet are quick to defend local cops as an exception. Where were these so-called "good cops" when we fought for justice for Chinadu? They didn't do anything. Chinadu is an unarmed black man murdered by cops three miles north of San Mateo. This is systemic racism. You all are in a position of power. Your inaction perpetuates systemic police brutality. You have to do more and pass a resolution or paint a mural. The number-one demand of the Movement for Black Lives is to defund the police. And until City Council takes action on that demand, you're all part of the problem. Let's have a real conversation. Give us another meeting.
Vanessa.
Hi, I'm a San Mateo resident. I've personally had a mental health crisis, and I want to underline "crisis", whereas officers just happen to be in patrolling the neighborhood where we were driving, and my husband was able to flag them down for help. It was a very cordial and respectful experience, and they were immediately able to call an ambulance for me and to work to calm the situation down. I'm very grateful for that and that they had the training and the empathy and the knowledge to handle that situation accordingly. And I hope that that translates across ethnic lines. I want to advocate for really putting more of our budget towards training and being there for every race, gender, and age group in our community. And to really emphasize that a lot of these are situations that are on the fly, and it isn't something you can prepare for, but we do need to have police there.
Thank you. Barbara.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and Chief Barbarini. In my opinion, San Mateo Police Department is the gold standard. I'm in full support of this agency. Every San Mateo government department could be studied as to how to improve and do better in training and education. But based on my personal experience of having someone break into my house, walking into them, leaving, the trauma I experienced and how well San Mateo Police Department took care of me and investigated the crime, we need to do everything we can to support Chief Barbarini and his department. We should not jump on the defund police bandwagon, but rather study how all departments in our city can do better for all of the citizens of San Mateo. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Dan.
Yes, thank you for this opportunity. I've been a resident of San Mateo for 45 years, and I'm in full support of the council and the police department. You guys are doing a good job. Obviously, you need to always reconsider what you're doing, because there's always changes in the air. And I think you're doing that. And I appreciate this opportunity. And with one last comment, I wanted to use my full 60 seconds. Just remember, illegitima non carbonendum. Those of you that know a little Latin knows that that means "don't let the bastards grind you down."
Thanks, Dan. Andrew. Andrew?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So, all of this data comes from the California Department of Justice and the U.S. Census Bureau. Black folks make up 3% of San Mateo County's population, and yet in 2018, they accounted for over 25% of all arrests made by police in the county. This is not isolated to just 2018. In fact, for every year from 1980 to 2018, black folks in San Mateo County have been overrepresented in arrests by at least 18%. We have to take these numbers as an indication that our police departments are consistently employing racist policing practices and have been doing so for a very long time. It's not just a few bad apples. A few bad apples wouldn't make numbers this significant. Our department is racist, too, and why would we consider fully funding a department that has actively employed racist practices for at least 40 years? This is money that could go to other services that would be far better to improve our communities.
Lexi.
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity. The diversion program sounds great. The SMART unit sounds great. But why do these get dramatically fewer resources than the rest of the police budget? And also, I still struggle with why do they all through, like, why do all of these interventions have to go through police first? As other commentators said, why is the first people on the scene armed? Police officers? I've been in those situations, and they're super scary. And maybe the SMART unit could arrive first. I also appreciate what Chief Barbarini said, that officers acting outside of the use of force policy will be taken very seriously and will be referred to Internal Affairs. But I've also heard countless stories from across the country of those reports not being handled correctly, of Internal Affairs covering up or letting off easy the subject of those reports. We saw a lot of data tonight, but I would very much like to see data or any transparency on what happens to those reports. How many are raised each year? How many are found credible? And how many lead to consequences? Thank you.
Thank you. Helen.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council members. I appreciate the police chief's presentation and share his vision to reduce crime in this community. However, studies show that better healthcare, housing, jobs, and youth programs decrease crime at a much higher rate than policing. I believe San Mateo should be prioritizing these programs. If our city is a reflection of our values, I'm appalled that 35% of our budget is going to the police, while only 1% is going towards community development, a department that works on building affordable housing during this housing crisis. In light of the pandemic, the current $8 million general fund deficit, the anticipated recession, I'm urging that the members of the council take action to decrease the police budget and reinvest in programs that help increase jobs, affordable housing, and education. This will decrease crime. We're counting on you today to represent your constituents to please use your political power to reimagine how we can reduce crime.
Thank you, Helen. Aiden.
Yo, I'm Aiden. I just graduated high school, and I know the cops don't do anything for kids in schools here in California. I know kids who were arrested because they were smoking weed in middle school and ended up only worse because of it. I know kids who were brutalized by the police for no reason other than that they talked back to someone. And I know that the police have done nothing to deal with the supposed gang activity here. The people who stopped the gang fight at my school were not the police with guns, who are nowhere to be found when situations like that happen, but instead our quarterback. So, I know y'all don't do anything. We had three different officers over one year carrying guns, walking around, and never saying shit to any of our kids. So, if y'all are going to sit here and act like there's no problem and cut people off after 60 seconds because you want to hand crumbs out to the masses, then you got a whole nother thing coming, because we're not going to back down. We are going to keep this fight going until we defund the police and we get justice for Chinadu Okobi and everyone else at the San Mateo Police Department is murdered.
Kyle.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, in the midst of a generation-defining mass movement calling for defunding of the police after numerous racist atrocities, it's a travesty that you guys would spend the first hour and a half of this presentation giving a PR propaganda presentation led by the cops, followed by fawning, flattering softball questions from City Council members who also happen to serve on the Board of the Police Athletic League. This is a conflict of interest and makes no sense. We need to defund the police. As I'm sure you've all seen, in Portland, people have been snatching protesters in unmarked vans. To refuse to push for democratic oversight of the police here in San Mateo right now is to be complicit with that. It's to be complicit with a push towards fascism that your children and grandchildren will judge you for. If it's not okay for what's happening in Portland to happen there, why is it okay for the same thing to happen here? Why is it okay for San Mateo sheriffs to post news articles from white nationalist publications like Breitbart?
Well, I want to echo what Kyle just said and what Aiden just said before. In my experience, that's true. I also want to bring up a concern, a couple of concerns I had. You mentioned that you review policemen's conducts reports, but I did not see that you said who reviews those. And I'm concerned because I cannot find that information on the website, at least not quickly, and that is a concern. Additionally, you said that the demographics of the police force are on the website. And again, I cannot quickly find those. I've been searching for those a little bit more, and I'm still not finding them, neither on the sheriff's office or the City of San Mateo's website. So, I, you know, of all the concerns that have been raised, it might not be the most pressing, but I think it is very important for the police to stay transparent. And in my opinion, that's not the case if I can't find these quickly.
Ace Out of C67.
Oh, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I want to just let the, or ask that the mayor and the city council.
Ace Out of C, do you have a motor on in the back? There we go.
Is that better? Okay. I urge that the mayor and the city council give the police all the moral and financial support that they need. I urge that the police be funded as they request and that they are able to hire new recruits and properly train them. I urge that the police department willingly accept excess military equipment so it can be used when needed with some very dangerous people that are now invading all of our cities. I totally support the police wearing helmets and riot gear and other protective clothing when they are going to these very dangerous. when they are going to these very dangerous.
Thank you, thank you, Space Adasee. Abigail.
Hi, hello, my name's Abigail. I lived in San Mateo my whole life. I just am here to say that anti-black police violence is not an abstract phenomenon happening in larger cities miles and miles away. And the reforms mentioned in the study session failed to be transparent about this. Chinadu Okobi, Ramsey Saad and Warren Ragudo should be alive right now. At the very most, they should be in a hospital receiving mental health treatment and released back to their families. Police officers are not trained or equipped to react to the vast majority of crises. The average police recruit spends 58 hours learning how to shoot and only eight hours learning how to de-escalate. While the use of force policy and collaboration with nonprofits are appreciated, police are not the ones to be responding to issues of mental health, domestic violence and school truancy. I urge stakeholders to begin meaningfully defunding the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office and Sheriff's Activities Leave, reducing their influence within the county and reallocating those funds towards organizations more qualified and promoting a safe and equitable community. Thank you.
Thank you, Abigail. Michael Nash.
Hi, I'll be brief. I just want to say that I think we do have a fantastic police department. They've done a great job on the protest movement in particular. I think as well that we should be extremely cautious before we make any changes to the operations. The idea of moving from the police to someone else should be thoroughly studied before it's done. And thirdly, an interesting technique is to ask the people who are going to be changing to make the decisions about how they will change. So why don't we ask Ed to ask his police force how they can address these things and not talk wildly about defunding something that has very little funding to begin with? Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Rich Hedges.
Hi, just want to let you know how much I support the police. I'm in full support of them. I serve on the Neighborhood Watch Board and have worked with them throughout our district. They're always very cordial. I've been on ride-alongs, been in a serious situation one night on a ride-along where the police were very cordial with the person they'd pulled over and also more than accepting of the criticism they were getting from a couple of people who tried to intervene. And there was absolutely no violence displayed and the individual was treated quite well. I can't believe there are any instances where our police department has acted improperly. They're so well-trained. Thank you.
Thank you, Midge.
Hi, I'm a legal immigrant and a resident of Bay Area for over 20 years. We, the law-abiding majority citizen of the Bay Area, are in full support of the police department, especially during this time of a lot of political protests and destruction of public properties everywhere. It is only logical during the increase of public disruption noted earlier, we need a stronger law and order to protect our family and community. You, as elected leaders, the mayor, the city council member, your sole responsibility and obligation is to protect our community, especially during this challenging time. We, the majority citizen, demand that you will continue enforce law and order by supporting our police department 100%. You should not defund nor cut the police budget so then can continue to keep their resources in order to serve and protect our community, our family and our children, to keep all of us safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Anna Chang Kramer. San Mateo has always been a safe place for me and I respect the police officers who put their lives on the line day in and day out. Please do not let the unfortunate isolated incidents create mistrust, discord or allegations of racism within our police force. A community must work together to create positive change and a progressive police force that includes social elements mentioned by our chief Barberini. And that's a critical part of our community. Cuts based on defunding the. Do not advance our community. Please.
ME. Go ahead, ME. ME. Okay, David Fada. David, go ahead. Dave Schwartz. Dave Schwartz, unmute, go ahead.
Hello?
Did I take it?
Go ahead, Dave.
Good evening, Mayor and council members.
David Fada, we'll come back to you. Right now, we're doing Dave Schwartz, then we'll go back to David Fada. Go ahead, Dave Schwartz.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Dave Schwartz. During this call, I've heard a few callers comment that armed police officers are responding to calls as if this were automatically a bad thing. Police officers possess many tools on their belts. Weapons are just one of them and rarely used. The tools that are most commonly used by San Mateo police officers are their ability to de-escalate a difficult situation non-violently, their intelligence and resourcefulness, their compassion for those they come into contact with and their honor with which they approach their duties. They are held to an extremely high standard and are routinely criticized. It is my hope that the city council will continue to fund the police department as recommended in the budget. Thank you.
David Fada.
Oh, thank you. Also wanted to give my support as well to the San Mateo Police Department. I saw the entire plan, I heard it, I thought it was very impressive. I also would like to say that many people today have brought up the experiences of Portland. I would like to point out that there is a tremendous amount of violent rioters and the breakers of law right now that are destroying that neighborhood and that police departments are needed in these times of chaos and destruction in order to help protect the majority of the citizens who help make up our community. Regardless of race, gender or creed, these people look forward to their police department and their police department do a fantastic job. From what I've seen today, San Mateo Police Department is continuing that inside here. I want to thank you all for your great work. Thank you.
Jenny Lee.
Hi, my family and I have lived in San Mateo for 20 years. We do not support decreasing police budget. I appreciate that our police taking their lives for us. It is a very dangerous job. They deserve all the equipment and the training. Our San Mateo police, always polite and professional. I urge our city increase police funding to protect our community, especially under current circumstances, so many rioting and looting coming on. Salute to our police department and I urge our city council to represent us, majority of silent people. Thank you.
Matt Feenster.
While policy reviews are a good thing and need refreshing from time to time, these calls to defund the police are ridiculous and are entirely unserious. As someone who did have several run-ins with the police when I was young, for what it's worth, those who are painting the police department, the city government, citizens and those who call the police as racists are entirely irresponsible as they use their latest collection of buzzwords and jargonism to slander an entire community. Systemic racism is a myth, a hoax and nothing but a trendy boogeyman for people to blame all of their problems on. Police respond to where they are called. Those who want to disarm the police, these are more unserious demands. An officer has no way of knowing ahead of time before they approach a situation whether it will be safe or not. If they show up to a situation unarmed, then someone draws a weapon on them. The criminal will quickly gain the upper hand and the officer could easily be killed or harmed. So it's plainly obvious that police need to be armed when responding, even though they seldom use their weapons. Thank you.
I'll show you a trendy boogeyman.
Cooler. Cooler.
Can you hear me?
Cooler.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, cooler.
Okay, no, okay, yeah, okay. Hello, I'm a lifetime resident of San Mateo. San Mateo has not been exempt from the issues that have been brought to light around the country. The cases of racism and abusive behavior have been documented and shown and have been mentioned by others tonight and is not bringing justice to all. This is a chance to join other cities and look beyond policing. And Mayor, to you, I saw you kneel that day at the protest. The gesture is much appreciated, but now is the time to show the crowd that you really meant it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jordan Grimes.
Good evening, council. Jordan Grimes, lifelong resident of San Mateo. I just want to start by saying that it was extremely disappointing that the council and chief Barberini got an hour and a half to speak and commentators are getting a single minute. I'll try and make this quick. The meeting was really inadequate. What many of us wanted was not a specific budget breakdown, but a discussion on the existential realities of policing. Should police officers be responding to people having mental health crises? Should they be responding to calls about being housed? Lastly, just there's this idea that our police force is comprised entirely of good cops and somehow are immune to racial bias. People said the same thing several weeks ago in Redwood City. And as of yesterday, we learned just how wrong that was based on the report that came out from retired officer Ryan Adler. I'd recommend all of you read about that. This is not some faraway problem. We need real community discussions about that. I urge that to happen. Thank you.
Howard Jones.
Good evening, my name is Howard Jones. My wife and I have lived in San Mateo for 40 years, raised our family here. It's a lovely city. I advise you not to get involved in this crazy national politics. We are 100% behind our police department. We do not want the criminal element moving into San Mateo and I urge you to fully fund our police department and I thank you for your time.
You should play criminal.
Thank you, Josh Tercero. Josh Tercero.
I'm here.
Jose Tercero. How about Jose Tercero? Is that it?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
Okay, first off, I want to send hello to you, Mayor, and also the city council and as well to support Barberini, the chief police. I want to tell you two things really quick from Redwood City. Number one, do you guys know what it is drug dealing and gun members in Central America? So what happened, if you defund the police department in the United States, you are welcome the business, open the business for the drug dealers and gun members to the beautiful United States. I understand that it's a politics, I understand that it's principles, I understand that it's site to take, but let me tell you something. When people flee Central America from asylum, they come to the United States because the gun members and the lawless in Central America. If you defund the police departments, you're gonna have a drug dealers open for business and gun members and drunks open for business in the beautiful United States. Thank you, Mayor. I support Mr. Barberini. Don't defund the police department because you're gonna have another Honduras and Salvadorian. And you guys don't know what it means to live in Central America.
Thank you, Brian Kieper.
Thanks, Mayor and council members. I'm a San Mateo resident, have been for about 10 years and a homeowner here. And I just want to echo some of the earlier comments that armed policemen or policewomen should not be the first responders in the vast majority of incidents if people are having a mental health crisis or they're having some other social service need. That intervention should be done by trained professionals who specialize in that situation, not people who bring tasers and handcuffs and guns to the situation. I think that the police budget, a lot of that could be reallocated to life-affirming services like housing, mental health, healthcare and jobs programs. And I would hope that the city is looking into those things, especially in this unprecedented economic condition caused by the global pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Gloria Brown.
No justice, no peace. Defund the fascist police.
Oh, justice, no peace.
No peace. Defund the fascist police.
Defund the police.
Defund the police.
Okay, now I think we're ready for Gloria. Go ahead, Gloria. Gloria, can you unmute? If not, then let's try ME. ME, can you unmute? Can you unhear? Can you hear me?
I'm unmuted.
We're gonna do ME and then Gloria. Go ahead, ME. All right, I just want to say that I really appreciate the San Mateo police. If anything, we should increase their budget to increase their training so that they can respond to the situations appropriately. In a domestic violence situation, I would hate to see a social worker killed by some guy that is already beating up on his wife. This is a case where we definitely don't need a social worker. We definitely need a police officer to de-escalate and work on the situation. Thank you. Thank you, ME. Gloria Brown.
Yes, thank you very much. I want to say that I'm not in favor of defunding the police department. However, I am in favor of redirecting a percentage of the funds provided to provide specialized training and/or crises prevention teams to help de-escalate situations when a person with Alzheimer's has not created, is in a crisis, not armed nor committed a crime. My husband has Alzheimer's and still bears the scars from police officers wrestling him down to the ground because he didn't cooperate and adhere to their orders. I'm confident that the training officers were not adequately trained to diffuse situations with persons with Alzheimer's. In my situation, one could debate if it was police brutality, but I know that it was a three to four police officers versus my 77-year-old husband and not one officer knew what to do in terms of de-escalating this situation. As a result, it cost us a year going to court, $10,000 and the felony charges dismissed. I'm hopeful that the de-escalation policy might not be enough. The 40-hour train.
Gloria, thank you for sharing your story with us. I'm aware of your story and I appreciate you sharing it with us tonight. Brian, go ahead, Brian Siebel.
Hey, thanks. Three quick threads. An organization that is responsible for auditing itself and holding its own members accountable will obviously struggle with impartiality. So some sort of independent review board with teeth, I think, would be more just. Separately, I think that showing up somewhere with a weapon when there isn't one there to begin with is inherently an escalation. And third, it seems that based on the slides, that the crime numbers have remained consistent over the last four years, which makes me question the efficacy of the solution. I can't think of an example in a business setting where you'd consider a negative outcome not improving a reason to continue considering the solution to be viable. I think I would appreciate if the city council would be proactive in developing investment strategies based around the idea of crime prevention through community development and over-indexing on social services, housing and jobs. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian. Final comment from Rick.
Hi, thanks for the opportunities. My name is Rick Shi, a longtime resident in San Mateo. I do not support defunding police department. Reducing police force will only invite more violence, more killings, which we have seen in Seattle, New York City and many other cities. So I love our police force and I support you all the way. However, it is imperative to train our police force well to make sure they do not abuse their powers. Consequently, we need police department, we need good ones. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Close the public comment period there, bring it back to the council.
Fuck the police, fuck you bootlicker.
That was Kyle Laurentin, I think. Kyle, we've closed the public comment period, Kyle. I'll bring it back to the public council and for some discussion. I had a question based on the comments. Chief, isn't it true that many of the officers who volunteer their time with the Police Athletic League, they're not dressed in their full uniforms? They don't have a utility belt at that time? If they're delivering food to somebody, they're not necessarily in uniform, right?
Well, it varies. Sometimes they, sometimes they will volunteer like before, after shift where they'll be in uniform. But then they may be wearing a polo shirt. I know I've done it where I was in a polo shirt with a police insignia on it without a duty belt. So it just kind of varies as to what's going on that day. It's never really been an issue. I mean, when we go out to our pal families, they're happy to see us and they're appreciative. We don't run in any.
Chief, why should cops deliver food to police or to kids and families? Okay, let's see, so. Rodriguez recues yourself, you're corrupt. Okay, so I'm gonna bring it back to the council for any final comments about this, about this issue. Are there questions that the council members have? I haven't heard any council members suggest rapid defunding of the police. I know that we, Chief, you're still in your first few months as the chief and you may be proposing restructuring or a different organizational structure, moving captain to lieutenant or vice versa. So I want to make sure that we're open to that. And we also have a pretty severe recession coming that we're going to have to respond to and all departments are gonna have to respond to. So I don't think this is the end of the conversation. I do really appreciate, Chief, all of your comments regarding the policy changes that you've made and the training that's. I do really appreciate, Chief, all of your comments regarding the policy changes that you've made and the training that's coming up. Do any other council members have comments that they'd like to make at this time? Eric, go ahead. Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, in terms of the whole calls for defunding the police, well, first off, let me thank the chief and all the public comments, and not only in this meeting, but also in all the other forums that the city's had. But, you know, when I look at the facts, I see our police department's budget relative to our general fund budget significantly below average compared to comparable departments in the county. The number of officers that we have per 1,000 population is below average. The vast majority of the department cost goes to salary, which reflects our region's very high cost of living. And related to that high salary, it's important to keep in mind that the job market for high-quality police officers is very competitive, and we compete to hire the best officers with other cities. And compensating officers competitively helps ensure that we hire only the best. The city of San Mateo has a fine police department, perhaps one of the best in the state. Is it perfect? No. Our department has made its share of mistakes in the past, and there is, of course, room for improvement. But in my opinion, defunding the police is not the answer. We should instead dive deeper into our policies, our outreach programs, and our training so that we could do a better job at making sure that everyone in our community feels comfortable around our officers and to ensure that everyone in our community feels safe and feels that our police force is here to keep everyone safe, including them. I look forward to continuing this conversation, but defunding the police as it's been proposed by some residents is not the answer at this point, in my opinion.
Okay, other council members. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I see that a lot of the calls for defunding really talking more about an enhanced investment into service models that they think will be successful. And so, you know, I think that the notion that you either are on the side of the police, meaning that there's no room for improvement, or you are, you know, a racist, is a false paradigm, and I think that we need to operate in the reality of complexity that this community exists in. And so where I see the opportunities here is in leveraging and enhancing some of the proven service models that are successful where that may not get the resources that they could. And one great example of that, I think, is the SMART program and the SMART van. Looking at one SMART van that services the entire county and some of the folks who have raised this issue is, you know, why is the proportional budget so small? The answer to that is because it's dictated by the capacity at the county level. So if we are going to look at expanding service models, expanding our capacity to meet the needs of our community members in mental health crises or the community members who are unhoused, that is going to take a regional approach. And so I think that, you know, the big opportunity here is to look at where these partnerships have really worked and look into how we can participate and enhance the conversations at the regional level to increase those investments. That's where I would like to see our city participating and really leaning into a compassionate and community policing model that is already proven out. I also want to echo some of the conversations that I heard raised around training and the need to enhance training and also recruit a diverse workforce. And I think that those are things that, moving forward, I could see us wanting to check in on and make sure that, you know, there's a clear strategy involved. I think that there's a lot of opportunity for us to look downstream in terms of the academy, who goes into the academy, how we recruit for the academy, to make sure that we are getting the best and the brightest and the most capable officers coming into our PD. So, you know, I think that from everything I've seen put forward in this presentation and through conversations with the community, I see that there's a lot of things that we're doing right. And I also see a clear acknowledgement from the PD internally and at the leadership level that there's a true openness to improvement. And that's how an organization, you know, that is how an organization should work, is looking inside and looking and being open to improvements and evolution. And so I think that we can all agree to be part of that.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Anyone else want to be heard on this item? Councilmember Pavin.
Through the mayor. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Councilmember Pavin.
Thank you, Rick. Councilmember Pavin.
I just, I'll dovetail on some of the comments that have already been made by my colleagues here. I think one of the things that we have to remember, which is why when it came time to council questions, I asked those questions about calls being made. And they are relevant because that's something that the police don't necessarily have control over. My observations have been that may be the first call for service, but it is certainly not the last call for help for many of our residents. And that additional help may come from other agencies that have their own funding. So this isn't a reflection that, gee, why is your police department not spending enough time or money on, let's say, a social worker that can help with mental health? A lot of that does come from another agency, to dovetail on what Councilmember Lee said. So we try to work together. It may be the first call, but it is not the last call. So I want to point that out because I really feel that's a big picture that has to be looked at here. Training has come to mind quite a bit, too. My observations have been that this is a fairly diverse department, and we can certainly be more diverse, no question about it. But what I find is that because you're getting calls that run the gambit, they really require individuals to work for a police force that are well-rounded. You really do have to be a jack-of-all-trades to a certain degree. So what I'm looking for and what I've observed to date are some fairly well-rounded people who are nimble, who can show up to a call and say, this might not be the best, or I might not be able to provide you the best care that you need. I'm going to get on the phone with our partner that we always work with. Let's see what we can do here. That's happening out in our community. So, and I appreciate that, but as we go forward, let's continue to find well-rounded individuals. And let's remain a well-rounded police force because we've got 110,000 people, more than likely, each with many different needs. So it does require somebody that's going to be nimble and well-rounded, and we'll continue to do that. The one thing I would suggest is if we could find some more grant money for training. I don't know if it's out there, Chief, but I'm always looking for ways that we can fund things. And if we could find more grant money for training, I think that'd be... I know there's a lot for, you know, equipment and those sorts of things, but I'd like to see it for training because I think the force would appreciate it, and I think our community would appreciate it as well. So I concur with all the other comments that have been made, and we will continue to work. We will continue to hone and enhance our skills. This is not a fait accompli. We're going to continue to work on how we best serve 110,000 people. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pavin. Councilmember Benia.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I want to say that I want to thank, from my heart, all of the commenters tonight because I realize there's a lot of very deep-seated fears on both sides. And I think people have reason to have fear right now, what they see on TV or what they've been experiencing in their life. When you live in a county where a population of 3% is 25% incarcerated at some times, I think that it's clear there is some imbalance. But I think this is getting to the core of what the problem here is. There are some people who have been in this country where we have historic racism and exclusion and segregation who have not been given the opportunities to succeed. And when people don't have what they need to be able to get a decent job, then other things happen. I'm not saying it's the right thing to do. I'm not saying it's what we should expect, but it is the outcome that we're getting. So I think if we want to get beyond and be able to provide safety and a decent place to live with needed services for everybody, we have to start by seeking to level the playing field. It's a huge task, but I believe we need to take it on because we're a nation divided. We're city-divided. Just listen to the comments, okay? We have to do the hard work. So I think that means, I like what Eric said about doing a deep dive into policies and practices, the budget. I think we need to get out a finer-tooth comb to look at some things and see if there are some ways where we can actually partner better with some of the agencies that have been helping the police already. The reason the police are always the first ones to show up with a gun is that because that's who everybody calls. That's where the calls go, okay? And we can work to change that. And I think we should look to find ways to better allocate people to different kinds of calls. That doesn't mean that I want to send unarmed people into dangerous situations. There has to be a filtering arrangement set up so that we have some idea what we're looking at. But, you know, I can't talk long enough here tonight to say what I think, but I know it's not simple. I understand the feeling on... I know there are more than two sides here. There are a lot of different sides. There are people who say, don't defund the police, but spend more money on other and better services. We have to find some balance there. We can't do it, though, based on a few conversations. I think we need to appoint a city council subcommittee to work with some staff to try and chart a course to see where we go from here. Because I have to agree, tonight, one-minute per each member of the public to comment on this really was not adequate. And I'm glad we had the listening session last week because people did need a chance to be heard. They took full advantage of it. I don't know if enough people knew about it for some reason. But I think we should do that again and invite more people. Make sure more people, maybe actually ask people to respond, saying, I will be in attendance. So we know what to expect, and then try and time it accordingly. But we have a lot to go through, and we're not done. I don't want to defund the police. I want to look at and see if there are some changes that we can make to start moving things in the right direction. At the same time, I think we need to look at, for instance, why are cops in schools? Well, I don't know. I'm not sure, but I don't think the cops inserted themselves over there. I think the schools asked for the police to be there. I remember some years back when at Hillsdale High School, a person who was having some sort of a mental health issue showed up with a bomb and a chainsaw and some other weapons and could have done some harm. But fortunately, he wasn't really capable of building a good bomb, and he was caught and subdued quickly. This kind of mental illness should be caught before somebody gets to that point at the school. Our school actually has a program where they're supposed to be looking for students who are having these issues and pulling them aside and seeing what services can be offered, okay? So the same should happen with adults, too. If adults are exhibiting signs of issues, we need to be able to find out and offer them the help they need before we come to a crisis. So those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you to everyone. This is an extremely important conversation, and it's a difficult conversation to have right now. I think we saw and heard some of the more radical opinions. And I appreciate all of the council members because I know and I see that you're putting in the time and the effort to sit down with the chief and go through the policy manual and to understand exactly what's happening on the ground. Council members have been on ride-alongs. We've talked to members of the public who feel all different ways about this issue. Chief Barberini, I think you are the right chief right now that we need to recruit and retain the most diverse and most highly educated and best-trained police force that we can ask for. My first sit-down with you about this issue was fantastic. You said that our first goal is to protect the life of our residents. Every single resident, including a resident who you may have contact with in an enforcement capacity. So to hold our officers to that standard is what I expect of you. I love that you are trying to divert kids out of the system. I love that you're trying to make sure that people who have addiction issues are getting a second chance. I love that you are trying to de-escalate all situations. And your policy responses to the "A can't wait" are right on the money. So I look to see those implemented. I look to see the culture within the San Mateo Police Department foster a de-escalation culture and an accountability culture because, as many people pointed out tonight, without accountability, we don't have the trust of the public. So I'd like to see all of those things. I do think that we have just begun this conversation. There's going to be further conversations about policies and about pushing for the service models that we really want. I do think you have a lot of things that you are doing very well. So I thank you again, Chief. I thank all the police officers tonight, and I look forward to continuing this conversation in the future. I think we're going to leave it there. I'm going to ask that we start our regular meeting at 7:35. Thank you, everybody.